All right. Okay, perfect. I'd like to welcome everyone to the Atchison County Commission Special Meeting. Um, tonight on Thursday, March twenty seventh, I'd like to call the meeting to order. If you please stand and join me in the.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Thanks, everyone, for joining us this evening. Um, we have a couple items of new business we want to discuss this evening. Uh, the first is Grasshopper Township, properties not within the fire district. So I don't know if I might invite Chief up if you'd like to come up here and.
He's aware more about that than I do.
Okay, perfect.
Okay.
Do you want to just come up here and introduce yourself and tell us?
John Atkinson, President of the Atchison County Real Fire District Number Two. Uh, I was discussing visiting with, uh, Brian Swenson, Grasshopper Township about the, the amount of money they give us a thousand dollars every year for coverage of part of Grasshopper Township District. Which our portion of Grasshopper District is about two miles north and south and I think eight miles east and west. Roughly. Um, I was asking him how that figure come about. It's been that way ever since I've been on the department in ninety seven when I joined, um. And he said, that's just, he thought it was just above and beyond of what the patrons of that part of the Grasshopper Township paid. He said, he was advised that actually didn't really have to give that portion if they didn't want to, but they felt that, you know, a thousand dollars to each department that covers part of Grasshopper. So it was above and beyond. Checking into it, um. The way I understand it, that no one in that portion actually has a fire tax levy on their property tax. And just kind of wondering, you know, we had a fire up there two weeks ago and had multiple fire departments there, uh, Eppingham, Lancaster, Evers, I believe Horton was there for a little while. Plus rescue and, you know, on that fire, I feel that, um, we spent above and beyond a thousand dollars just on that one fire. It was, you know, just checking to see what the options were, you know, you know. Most other people in our district are paying a fire tax. Actually, you know, so much of their tax goes to our fire district, uh, you know, other people in Atchison County, you know, the way the district lines are, go to Evers, uh, go to Horton, but there's just kind of what we call a no man's land in there that none of the tax money is going to any fire department for protection.
Isn't there a section west of the river that's not taxed by either, by anyone?
There is anything west of the river, uh, to the county line, and it follows the river, there's no taxation on that either. Um, most of that, I mean, it's always been kind of Holton, Jackson County, uh, covered west of the river. Valley Falls comes up south of the river into there, but I, no one's getting any tax base off that.
You know whether there are contracts in place for those?
I think it was just kind of a verbal back years ago, verbal agreement that's in this Grasshopper situation that, you know, Real Fire District Number Two took this portion, um, Evers Fire took from Evers down to ours.
I probably raised the contract poorly, or, uh, or the question poorly. Do you, do you know whether or not? I, I guess those would be capioma. Does capioma pay? Holden Fire Department of Valley Falls?
No, I've talked to, uh, Holden Fire Department. They get no tax dollars on that and Valley Falls, they get no tax dollars off of that either. So anything that's not in a district, whether it be one, two, three, four, or five here in Atchison County, or out of that, not in that district and some other county covers it. Um, there's, there's no tax dollars. I know Nortonville comes up into Atchison County, but that's in their district. Uh, and I do believe that they, they get a tax base on that.
So instead of township reimbursing, it would be actually extending your district to actually be a taxing district.
Correct.
Completely.
Yes, if, if that would be an option or, um.
So would that? I, yeah, it, it's definitely an option. I wasn't sure which areas we were talking about because there's different rules if, for uh, joining a fire district that's located within the same county as opposed to joining a district that's located in another county. But for a district that's located in Atchison County, um, the people that live there, the owners of ten percent of the land that's not covered by the district have to petition to be added to the district. And when that happens, there's a publication notice that goes, gives the other residents of the affected area the opportunity to come and object. And then it comes before the Board of County Commissioners and they make the decision as to whether to modify the, the district. They cannot do it on their own. They cannot just say, we're going to change the district. There has to be a petition filed by, um, owners of land, ten percent of the land located in the areas that you're seeking to add.
Right.
And that's any land, not residents, just land in general?
Just land, yes. And, and an area of that size, you're probably not talking about to get ten percent, you're probably not talking about a whole lot of land.
Right, right. And, you know, and by no means we want to, do not want to take over the whole Grasshopper. We've, we like our boundary. I mean, it, it works good. I mean, with, with Evers coming from the north, uh, Horton coming from the west, they just kind of, when the districts were set up.
How do, how do you do that? What do you suggest? Do they, do they call, do these guys call a meeting and invite those residents or how, how do you? Yeah, we, I have some experience because Walnut Township, we had the situation where like the south third of the of the, uh, township wasn't covered by one. So we, we went through the process and I can give you a, I, I can create a form to use for people that landowners to sign to be added. But yeah, it's just a petition process. You can reach out to them however you like. And in this situation, we have two landowners that owned enough land to meet that. So they, they made a few phone calls. We only had about five people that, that actually signed petitions, but Bill Paul and Charlie Purdue owned that land to constitute ten percent of that area. So.
Right. Um, you know, and we're not talking that much land, you know, two miles by, by six or eight miles, whatever it is to the, to the west. Um, uh, you know, just like I said, that fire there two weeks ago, I mean, and whether we're getting any tax base or not, we're still going to do the coverage and the coverage would be the same, but, you know, to make it when I started visiting with Ryan, the, uh, you know, people in our district are paying extra on their taxes for fire protection where people outside the district that aren't in a district, you know, they're, they're getting the same level of protection for, for no dollars.
Are you interested in doing that out west of the river also? Or are you gonna do, I mean, I don't know if the need to be done simultaneously. It might get confusing if you had two areas taking petitions at the same time, but.
The one concern with west of the river is, you know, if it's, if the river's out and flooded, we have no access to it. And, and that's kind of the way, way I understand when the district was formed, but the river was the boundary. Because, you know, when river goes out and it does, you know, about every year.
When I was on, I had conversations with the Holden firefighters that thought that you guys were getting, or the Real Fire District Two was getting tax dollars. I'm going, no, it wasn't taxed at all. They were supposed to have filed, because it is across the county line, they had to file special paperwork. Is it in my right path? That's right. And they never did do that. And I believe that went clear back to when Danny Barnett set up the nine one one system because I believe the calls from there went to Holt. They, they still do.
They still do, yes.
And so that would be something else. If you were ever interested in taking that, we'd have to get that transferred where the calls would actually have to come this way if that became your district.
Right. And, and that's like the city of Muskota, it's covered by Horton.
Mm-hmm.
So if they're fire in Horton or in Muskota, nine one one goes to Brown County Dispatch first, and then they call Atchison County for mutual aid.
So this here in Grasshopper would be very simple because all the calls go there to you anyway.
Correct.
It's already, it's the same boundaries. It would just be your taxing district instead of coming through Grasshopper.
Hmm, I don't see any problem with that at all. So. And, and, and I'm not positive, Corey, how does it work for Evers coming down south? Is that coming from Brown County?
Uh, no.
On the nine one one?
They go into Atchison County and then they transfer them off to Horton Dispatch.
Okay.
We will leave maps for Angel, uh, just so. So Grasshopper Township has no fire district in this area, right? So, so Horton covers that, those areas. Evers carries here, and this is the area they're talking about. But then I'm just asking like for a resident living over here, what's the difference? There's no tax base for them?
No tax base for them, but Horton Fire Department covers that.
Well, they would have to file, and Horton would have to file the same thing.
That you guys.
Yeah, well, it would actually be more because it's across county line, like I was just talking with Pat about the Jackson.
And same with capioma, these areas don't have taxing.
Valley Falls has got this area and it would be just north of one sixteen. This area here is the Holden or, well.
But the residents aren't taxed.
Correct, correct.
But they get the service.
They get the serve.
And the area you're talking about, because I was just trying to understand the two maps, this one shows no fire district. So you're just gonna butt up against Evers?
And, and we cover this script here. Like I said, it's going up Edwards Road, it's two miles and then eight miles kind of rubs down a little.
Is it in line with Evers or just like a little bit more?
I think it's pretty much in line with Evers, isn't it? Sure. On that map, when I drop it down.
A little more. That area is out of Horton.
Yeah, so this here that little script that we cover in there. It's pretty much. Well, that would run through three or two.
So then once they put, and this red line would just come up here and encompass that area.
Yeah, and that would actually become a district instead of a, just a ca- uh, township line.
But like on our south line, how it jogs up and down, back when the district was formed, they went to the landowner. Now we want to go to Northville. We want to go to Valley, and that's how that was.
Yeah, that was confusing, knowing exactly who, whose responsibility it is.
So how do those get routed if somebody's out there and called nine one one? It's just based on your location? It routes where?
Yeah.
So it would route to Brown County and Horton or Jackson County?
Right.
Interesting.
So yeah, basically we have three counties coming in, Atchison County to cover the west, north, and south portions, and I don't know how it is. On this side, whether Donovan County comes in down, I'm, I'm not familiar with the districts down here.
I think Shannon was clear. Takes their whole township.
Yeah, well, and that's how mine are, like Mount Pleasant's all Mount Pleasant, Walnut's all Walnut, and then Center, you guys have some of Center.
Yeah.
And Nortonville has some of Center.
Center and Lancaster have some of Center.
Yeah.
And we have some of, of little townships.
Benton?
No, um, that Lancaster, yeah. That little.
The yellow?
No, up here it's blue, and the blue Lancaster.
Yep, Lancaster.
Yeah, see that little little corner out there, up the, right there, is, is ain't that part of Lancaster Township?
Uh, not for sure.
Well, no, I'm, I'm not.
I think so.
If it would go straight.
Yeah, that's what I was thinking, that the township actually goes straight.
It's interesting because Shannon comes down a bit, Center goes up a bit.
Yeah. And, and I think it was just the way
we're showing that you have response to all of this area. But this is the part that's not in your district. So I don't know. Do you have a contract then with?
I.
With Grasshopper?
No, they just.
Who sends you the money though? It's.
Grasshopper Township. They, they, they send out, uh, first of the year when tax, when get the money from the county, they send real district number two, which is F and M, a thousand dollars. They send Evers a thousand dollars and they send Horton a thousand dollars.
So.
Just out of the township budget.
The part that you're talking about is that?
Your fifteen hundred, okay.
I just got to check in.
Okay.
The part that you're talking about expanding?
Yes.
Yeah, and talking with Ryan, that's what he thought. He thought it was a thousand apiece, but he wasn't positive.
The part that you're talking about expanding, is that just this part here or is it all of that? Is it all that?
Everything in that, in that deal. I mean, that's what we're covering.
Okay, you, all right. You, you had said the two by six.
Well, I, I.
Is that just? We want to get it right.
Where, where is some Muskota? Cause we go right to the city limits of Muskota. Bourbon Road's ours and then we go over to Clay and below.
This, this is the, there's Muskota, but it's not on. It, it's right here.
Okay. Yeah, so, yeah, without a roadmap, it's hard to. So this is, this is all of uh, Grasshopper Township that.
That is.
That would be susceptible.
Yeah.
You know, the and here's what you're showing that, that we're, that's what we're covering or that's what there's no tax base on?
Yeah, okay. There's currently your fire district draws off right here.
Right.
That's an area which is not in these contracts. Okay, and it's been credited toward you when this was set up. I, I dealt, I think with Corey and Wes to make sure that we were putting these lines where they should go. And they said you had an agreement to serve, and that's the area that isn't covered by one of the other agreements.
Okay, so, yeah, and, and if.
There is no agreement. There's no, there's nothing in writing stating that we just every year get this check.
I, I think it's.
Verbal agreements.
Agreement.
Yeah, it's right, right.
Which I don't know what.
There's never any, any contracts or any.
No, no contract. We've been getting it as low as ever on there. I'd like to remember some.
Those are discussion whether we continue to just do the thousand or see what we, if we can get it districts, and then there's no need for any of that. And all it takes is one township trustee or board that doesn't want to play it, and then we're sitting there covering a district with no funds.
Well, except you're not all the due coverage.
Correct. We're not, but we're agreeing to do that to the assessments out there. It's.
No.
I understand. We have a reason. I do what we do.
And when it comes down to it, it's not all about money. It's, you know, we're going to protect and serve the area that we always have, but with those patients that are paying like everybody else.
It's, it's a little bit, you know, you gotta have it to serve.
Yes.
Not for you personally, any individual in here, but you gotta have, you gotta have the money to.
They're operating.
Service, so.
Yeah, yeah, you know, the, you know, you all know everything costs more, I mean.
Yep. Yeah, and if that hasn't gone up in, how many years that you know of?
I've been on since ninety seven and it's always been a thousand dollars.
Yeah, so it's, it's, it's time for something.
And that, and that's coming out of the township budget, not, you know. Which I'm sure the township budget could use that thousand dollars and that other money that they're paying everybody else too.
Yeah, so then the tax actually makes, probably makes more sense than, than to, than to go ask them to raise the the amount, you know, it, it probably makes more sense to create the tax district if you can, or expand your district if you can.
Citizens to know they're covered. They're in the district and they know.
Yeah.
Yeah. So that, that was our question on that, so.
Yeah, I, can you help them with that, Pat?
Yeah, yeah, be right down here. The email address is on the. Happy to be to list of all the property owners in that area. Okay, that'd be great.
It's. Yeah.
Good on that topic?
I believe we're good on that. Anybody else? Sorry, blew that order.
Awesome. Next is County Assumption and Rescue Services. Chief, you wanna speak to that?
Well, I can speak.
Okay.
Been in discussion with Corey about rescue service and, uh, liability issues and stuff, and he's done some proposals to us, um. Unfortunately, the Fire District Board hasn't totally agreed with either one, any of the proposals, um. What we voted on at our last meeting was, I have the minutes here from the last meeting that on a rescue truck decision, um, we voted to go with option three, which option three in this is Atchison County Emergency Service will establish a similar level of service station than Eppingham with the continuation of current staff to include any current Atchison County Real Fire District Number Two members that wish to continue to be a member of Atchison County Emergency Service and Rescue Division. Atchison County would provide its own apparatus, equipment, and other need, items needed, uh. Detailed in option one, Atchison County Real District, number two shall provide rescue coverage at the same level as previously provided until such time the county can establish a facility. The county shall take possession of all county-owned equipment. Atchison County Real Fire District Number Two shall retain possession of all equipment to utilize as they fit. Um, so on our our motion was to go with option three with amendments, and we wanted to have another discussion for some of the amendments on there, the date for the county uh, to have a truck out west. Can you read my handwriting? Yeah, kind of sort of.
Thank the next one.
And a mutual aid contract, uh, F and M Fire District will draft up mutual aid contest, contract board will set a date to draft up agreements, um. Uh, all in favor, motion carries. So with, with that, we wanted to, um, you know, keep the, keep our truck in service and, you know, be an extra asset to the western part of the county. Kind of and I kind of liked option two, you know, kind of a deal. There were some amendments on there, but the board didn't majority of the board didn't like it, so we didn't go with it. Kind of this kind of where the fire board is at. We've got some pointers here that we've all discussed and wrote down was, and January twelfth, I believe it was, when Atchison County went, uh, rural wide or countywide EMS got rid of, uh, Rescue Two and, or got rid of the ambulance that was volunteering the western part, got rid of when the hospital owned the eastern part. Um, we was, we was told that uh, you know, Rescue Two was basically gonna be disbanded and unless we took it over, all the rescue calls would come out of Atchison. So if someone was trapped in a vehicle that from the commissioners, then that, you know, they wouldn't got to fund a rescue service in Eppingham. So we decided to take over rescue service, Rescue Two. Uh, we was given the old, uh, rescue truck, which was a old ambulance that was very outdated and, and it, it served dysfunction. Um, we were told, uh, that if we didn't, you know, take, take the stuff that it was, you know, just gonna come out of Atchison, the western part wasn't gonna have any coverage. You know, quick coverage. Um, we was given the truck. We was given the equipment that was on the truck. It was all outdated. Most of it was from the early seventies. So, and since then, with the fire district budget, we have, uh, upgraded trucks. Um, we have bought all new tools to put on there. Uh, the, the jaws, the spreader, the pumps and everything out of, out of the budget with no extra cost to the, to the county as far as purchasing that stuff, we just done it out of our budget, um. The fire department has financially supported everything of Rescue Two since that point, except for the services of the tool, getting the tools serviced in twenty twenty four. Uh, Rescue did pay for that. That's kind of where we're at on that. In this contract, kind of what started was the liability concerns. And our thoughts are, what are the liability concerns? Because if anybody that responds in Rescue Two's truck or the fire department's truck, they're covered under the fire department because we send our reports in as fire and rescue. Um. Um, another one of the liabilities, what are the liabilities of, you know, running hot from, from the Atchison Station, clear to Muskota for, you know, a a sick person. I mean, if, if no one's responding from F and M, being from F and M and the fire department, you know, it, we're volunteers and which the whole rescue is a volunteer service. I mean, we don't have set hours that, for days that you will do this or you won't. I feel that it's worked great for the last since two thousand twelve, but I understand that there's, and we understand there is, you know, liability issues and um, one other main concern of ours was that Rescue wants all rescue members, whether they live here in Atchison or the EMS people to have access to our building and, and equipment. I personally, myself, most of the board, we agree with some of that, but we, we do want to have control of who we let into our building. And after our meeting there this month, on Friday, we got a message from EMS services that the truck was, uh, truck was brought out of Atchison, put in the Noxious Weed Building. And all codes to every county building, EMS and all that was changed due to termination of an employee. We don't want to have changed the code on our building. It'd be every thirty days if somebody gets fired. I mean, because we have a lot of, you know, the volunteer firefighters, we've had the same code since we built the building and we don't want to have to change all that. Some of the things that, you know. Some of the things that, you know. If it goes to hundred percent that, you know, it's. Effingham Fire is not part of rescue no more, um, some of the things that rescue. Will be limited to, um, we're gonna lose access to. One ranger with our ranger that has a rescue bed in it. My thought and some of the other guys' thought also is that. Most of the guys on the fire department. Have been trained for extrication, vehicle extrication and stuff like that, you know, if. If it's not fire rescue anymore, then, you know, you're losing a lot of. Lot of personnel that is not on rescue, not getting paid, not. You know. They just show up to help the community. And and if it's just rescue a hundred percent, not fire rescue anymore, then. There's several of them that says, you know, we're not gonna go no more. I I don't wanna. You know, it's not about the money. Most of us, it's not about the money, I mean, if if we was planning on making a living, I mean. Rescue calls ain't gonna make. And most of us, you know. Speaking for myself, maybe a thousand dollars. And speaking. In behalf of myself, I've been doing it since ninety seven when I. Joined the department, if there's a rescue call, wreck or, you know, something like that, lip to sit, some that's not medical, I'm not medically certified. I would go do it and. Two years ago, Christmas time, Christmas day, we had two racks and I left out of the house and. When I got back, my wife says, either you go take the best school and join rescue and start getting paid or you're gonna quit doing it. So that's when I went done, I mean, it's not worth the money, it's. You know. If you go over here, bills getting getting paid, you should be doing the same thing and have have. Have them benefit, so that that's why I joined rescue. Other than just being on the fire department and going to rescue calls. Gonna lose. Six or seven personnel. That's. And the. Our thoughts on it. Anybody else have anything to add to that?
I just feel like we, if we still got our equipment on our truck and we respond as. Effingham Fire, which was we was told that if we responded, if we responded in our truck, you responded as Effingham Fire, but we're not getting paid. Um, and and once again, I'm not in it for the money, I don't give crap if I get paid or not. I'm doing it for the welfare of the people in the community. But. That's as far as I'm concerned, we're still doing, we're still trained. I'm still certified, these guys are still certified. There's no reason we shouldn't be getting paid, we're doing the same job the rescue is doing.
And I think that was in proposal, I wanna say it was in option two, like. If if the if our fire guys don't join rescue, that they can't do medical or extrication. That's not right either, if you're not medically certified, hundred percent agree, but if you're trained in extrication and proficient and it shouldn't matter.
Well, that's just what Johnny was saying, some of the guys aren't on rescue, but they've been through all the trainings with us, just like everybody else has.
Think it's at the bottom of that first page and off to Johnny.
So just some thoughts, um, you had mentioned January twelfth, I think. Okay, cuz I was thinking January first. Okay, way before I, okay, cuz that's. One of the things of like listening to previous commissioners, first of all, I wasn't here, don't know what they did, any of that, but. It's unfortunate that you were put in that situation of. We're not gonna take care, figure it out kind of situation from from what you're explaining, right, I I wasn't there, don't know, but I think, um. In listening to where your board is and and what you're explaining and. The option you chose, I think it's. It's a really great segue to how we work together to develop a mutual aid contract, I think it's. It relieves you of some of the fears that you talked about. You don't have to worry about control, like you can keep your codes the same, know who's in your building, who's accessing it, it. Also allows us to run rescue, a county service. And allow whoever needs access, you know, that's on our roster to have access to the equipment. Now that we have stage vehicles too and that side of the county, so it's even. Better, um, as far as. Switching over. My understanding is if you respond as a rescue and then a fire breaks out, then they go to the. Chief or the person in charge of the fire to say, hey, I'm rescue, but I need to switch over to fire now, and then you would authorize that. Um, in your capacity, whoever's whoever's in charge and. I would feel that the role reversal would probably be the same as far as whoever's in charge of rescue would be making that call of. If you're certified for rescue and you're responding as fire and you're like, oh, gosh, this just turned into now a rescue, you would take. Go to the the person in charge of rescue and say, hey, I was here on fi- as a fire, but I'm switching to rescue. Um, that's that's been my understanding of how the operations work. And then as far as the limiting the access to the fire equipment, hundred percent agree, like. Whatever you guys feel you need to do to protect yourselves, liability like and say, you know, this is this is fire equipment, cuz. At the end of the day, I mean, let's just be honest, why we're we're here is. The county had an unforeseen change, um, we had, you know, all. Our ducts narrow, things were working and something out of our control happened, we've changed. Uh, leadership and and in changing, right, and getting new people joining us, we see new things. And when we find things that are out of whack and we know better, we gotta be better and we gotta, you know. We have to make sure that our affairs are in order to where, when you're on the rescue roster and your wife knows you're out there responding to rescue. And heaven forbid, it doesn't, but if it happened, that you would be covered that. You know, if something happened, and I think that's the biggest thing in today's world is making sure that we have all of those things in place and. And when you without. When you start mixing ties, and that was a question, because I know a lot of you are are. Fire and rescue certified, like you're the you're the same, but not everybody is that way, right, so. To your example of jumping in truck. And red and I I guess I was a little confused on that, but I it just, I think you guys did a. Wise choice and I think you chose the right option and I think this is going to be the beginning of like. Getting things in order for your. What your equipment is, you know, it's covered, we know what ours is, and then we can work together on developing that mutual aid agreement so that. We all know we have each other's back at the end of the day, I mean, because what you guys said, no. Nobody, you guys are all special and we appreciate everything you do because it takes special people to take care of and show up and volunteer and. It's, I mean, that's just my feedback, but I'll let you guys, you know, give.
Well, I'm just, I being the new guy here, I'm trying to get to the core of, I I hear liability and I hear, I hear personnel. Those are the two sticking points in that. In that agreement, I haven't read it, but just based on what you told me, those are the two things that I wrote down were the. Issues, I don't, uh, so I need to understand. The liability issue a little better, um. And then. Go to the personnel side, but. What's the liability issue?
Oh, there's, there's no agreement and there's no, there's nothing, okay, so.
And like a mutual aid. There is nothing, but I mean, that could still happen, correct?
So so there was an agreement at one time, neither you guys nor us can find it, so unfortunately, there's no.
But there was one.
At one time, there was, but unfortunately now, if you can't find it, we can't find it, there is no.
Yeah, we found it in our minutes back in thirteen, I guess it was, um, that. It says in our minutes that. Uh, Chief Clipper has. The title to the rescue truck. And the agreement in the office and we cannot find it. Cory said he's searched. Can't find it. Somewhere. And so apparently it wasn't. Ever filed or whatever, I I don't know. I was on the board at the time, but. I was.
So it it delves further into. You know, medical control. You know, as EMTs, paramedics, AMTs, you have to be under a doctor's license, you have to be under protocol, you have to be under medical control, well. Are they under our medical control or are they not? You know, you're responding to a county rescue call, you're taking this county rescue. But you've got a firefighter jumping in a fire department on truck going to a county rescue call, potentially outside their jurisdiction or. I'm sure their insurance has probably covered it once. But does does their insurance go way up, do we end up in court, do the two insurance companies involve? There's just nothing that spells out how this was supposed to.
That's that's the scenario without having a mutual aid agreement.
Or no agreement whatsoever, no contract, no lease, no, 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 so that's where it came from and to Casey's point. When the unfortunate situations occurred, we all started looking at everything. You know, it wasn't just, we have a mutual aid agreement with Effingham Fire District. Are we entering things into our kind of software appropriately, like our CIC program, our accounting, are we vetting employees properly, we. You you two especially were there for all that, we we went through that stuff and we looked at everything, so this wasn't.
There were, yeah, a lot of things.
Somebody said, oh, Effingham Fire did a bad job, this was never where this came from, the genesis was.
There were a lot of things brought to light and we were like. We had to do our due diligence.
Reluctant and wanted to go do. But it was something we all had to accept that we had to be better at what we did and we had to pay closer attention, we had no way tax player dollars were going and. And these types of things, so. That's kind of the genesis and then, yes. It's very difficult to keep a volunteer service together when certain people aren't allowed to operate the apparatus or have. Full access to everything. And it's a concern that. You know, it's their truck. It's their building, I have no right to tell my employees, go get that truck, I have no right to do that whatsoever. But if I've got qualified people on my rescue squad standing in Effingham and they can't take the truck. Then the truck does have to come out to Addison and we drive by the truck and going back to the nature of volunteer services. That volunteer fire department can't guarantee a response either, so. We have gotta have our employees, rescue squad employees to have access to that truck to head to events that we get the best chances that trucks gonna make it to a call.
Well, and also being mindful to your concerns, like you don't want people in the building, this is a good way that. Now we're both, you have one station in Effingham, we have one station in Effingham and. It's.
Is that right? I I get that too, but I'm. Coming down to the taxpayers, they're, I mean.
They're it's a duplication.
Sitting within a mile of each other.
Right, right. So what's the answer?
I don't know, that's why we're here.
Why can't we, why can't we have access to the same? Equipment, why why can't we? Share equipment?
I don't know what the.
Well, I thi- I think in, I think in often too, correct me if I'm wrong, I think it says that all. Emergency services personnel will have access to our building. I mean, there's, like Johnny said, there's a lot of money of stuff sitting in there and. Yeah, we know the majority of people, we don't know everybody that Cory hires or EMS hires and that and that, we don't need to.
Yeah.
But if if they're all allowed in our building, I think that's kind of a, that's an issue, in my opinion, but.
So now your your rescue truck is separate from everything else, or is it?
Our rescue truck is in the wide open building with everything.
What if it was? It, your truck was setting in or this. At the uh. Noxious weed building. And it wasn't even in your just in your building.
But that doesn't fix the liability issue, like the county rescue needs to drive a county.
Well, that and and then with it setting in, my thoughts on a truck setting in the Noxious Weed Building, now you have all of. County Road and Bridge employees. Access to that truck. I they're in the building with it.
And you've got people. Access to your building, whether it's chemicals and all that stuff. You have, you have us people getting in your guys' Noxious Weed Building to get that truck. Your county employees, so. But I think there's some that are that are on our fire department that. Oh, and that's where we'd have to draw the line up too, is if they're not county employees, they can't access that truck in that building, and that's why we have the little. I guess informational signature thing that says, you know, here's how this building's to be handled, here's how we're gonna be good roommates, but Notch is we.
Right, and and then that comes down to. What I, you know. Our guys that are trained in rescue of vehicle extrication, if they're standing there in Effingham. And we take.
Our truck.
Take our truck. Then there's the, and we're. We wanna be where they're covered. You know, they're not on rescue, but they're gonna get there a lot sooner and help cut that vehicle apart. Extrication.
I have zero issue with that, it's your truck, your tools, your people, your equipment.
But are we covered, are they covered? That that's.
Not by, not by county protocol or county insurance, no, it would need to be your policy, yours, your. Your change man.
Right, and.
Well, no, I'm still, I understand their point, but I to me, it I I don't. I I, I think there's a way that you can get around the trust issue, I I don't. I mean, we're we're adults here, I.
I think the biggest problem nobody's got is that. There was. New rescue tools bought for this side of county, two sets. We bought our own. Not county, we paid for our own.
Sure.
And. You know, it's kind of a slap in the face when. You take the initiative to make sure that that side of the county is covered. You didn't get no county dollars from it through EMS or through emergency management. But yet we've done the same service. For all these years at our cost. For the real fire district and our people out there have paid for that. Where. Emergency management paid for everything down here. That's kind of a. A tough pill to swallow.
Actually agree with that, that should have never have happened.
It's a real tough pill to swallow when you spend that kind of money out of your budget. Well, and I know I've personally called Bill Pol today, I got thinking, who would have been. A commissioner at the time and it was between. Uh, this happened before I became a commissioner, so I don't, I I didn't see the transition, I never had anything when I was a fire. Fighter. To do with that, uh, rescue truck, so I called him today and he had no recollection of it, I mean, it's it's amazing that there's no, I I wish there was whatever. However, it was that somebody would know what was promised, what wasn't.
Commissioner came to you and told you that? Like, did you guys recollect, you're you're given dates and stuff, so who told, who told you?
We know it was January thirteen when we took over, because that's when. Mid county wide EMS.
And since then, you guys have purchased the truck and outfitted it.
Cause you went on in what, fourteen?
So I became commissioner in fifteen, March of fifteen, so it had to happen in that window.
So it would have been, probably would have been Mike Bowdenhouse, but.
Yeah.
He's not gonna tell.
Yeah, uh, when did that? Rescue truck ever set in the old blue building?
It's set at Kirk's house for.
I do remember that now, but I wasn't, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. It was after.
Uh, winter, winter time, we put it in the Noxious Weed Building.
Okay.
But I'm. When it got above freezing, it sat down at Kirk's house and the. In which the fire department. Uh, made kind of a gravel pad down there to park it on. So.
After the, during that transition, was it always considered county, was it county EMS or county rescue? Or what what was it, was it designated?
It was always just page rescue two, basically anything west of Kingman was was Effingham's district and anything east of Kingman was Addison's district.
Were you always? Did you train with rescue on?
Oh, yeah.
Oh, yeah.
All of that. And you were paid by the runs from the county.
As long as you were on rescue, Johnny in his sense, he was not for a number of years.
Okay. And then followed county dispatch rescue would then call you as rescue two, just they actually called.
For the longest, for the longest time, it was always paged out of rescue one or rescue two, within the last probably. Five, six years, it's just kind of page out of rescue now, you know, with with new personnel at. Dispatch is just paged out of rescue, uh, EMS. Dispatch is just paged out of rescue, uh EMS and rescue, please respond. And and we kind of knew. You know. By the roads, by the numerics. Which one went?
That enough rescue one had those pages, we would respond. And say, well, we're not there, but enough we had them spaced, so they could respond.
There's been several times rescue twos went south X and on seventy three highway, I mean.
Well, I I think it's unfortunate that we're we find ourselves here, um. I'm kind of unique because I served on fire district and now I'm at the county and I've kind of seen both sides, um. Kirk called me or I called you back the other night. We had. Pretty lengthy conversation uh about, I had a lot of different. Things to to talk about and how how we got here and it's just kind of really an unknown as a. Consumer in that part of the county, it's um. I'll I'll be probably the most affected of of anybody here, I mean, as as a commissioner uh uh to what I get. Uh, as for service, um, I think they've done a. The rescue twos done a great job. Never heard any complaints about the service or or anything like that. But a- and I do agree with the fact that you have the right to keep people out of your building. It's your building if you. You have the right to restrict that. But then that. Here becomes the dilemma is like. There's con- consequences for that too. Whether we like it or not. There are situations when that will slow down. A potential call. If there's not access to equipment. I don't know what to do about it. I think for now, I think that having the second truck there. As a consumer of whoever, I don't. I don't care. I want, if I need it, I want someone there to take care of me, extract me from a vehicle or a tractor or anything like that. And so. I'm, I think. This is probably the compromise situation for now. I think the first thing we need is some kind of uh mutual aid agreement. And build on that and uh. I don't know. Have we worked on a mutual aid agreement yet?
I I drafted a proposal, you know. That was in.
That was in there.
The last three proposals that there's.
Well, but the mutual aid agreement I thought would be much more detailed than than.
Well, that one was more of an auto aid agreement to continue the way it had been run, but establish. You know, where they were to go. I mean, the whole west part of the county isn't Effingham's fire district where they have any obligation to go to Muskota or South Hall or. So we want to make sure. And I don't think this fire board would ever do it. Don't get me wrong. I said this for this fire board, but this fire board might change people in five to seven years. These boards change in five to seven years from now, that board might look around, why are we putting in the county rescue service when we need a new fire engine? Well, there's nothing that says they're obligated to provide coverage to those areas outside of their fire jurisdiction, but I am. I have to make sure that occurs. So that was another thing. There was nothing in there that said. The. District two had to respond to the Muskota area, to the South of Horton area, or the the Valley Falls corner, or any of those areas. So we didn't have anything there either. So that agreement covered things hopefully like that. It didn't get voted on and that's. Is what it is. That was their vote. Um, but going forward. Yeah, mutual aid agreement that says. You know, rescue gets paid to this area and we need help almost for that. I don't want to eliminate any responders. That's not at all my goals. My goal wasn't to end the relationship, but at a certain point, we've been negotiating with this for a year. At what point? Okay, we we're not going to come to an agreement that makes everybody happy or even remotely content. I'm I'm obligated to provide res- rescue service. That's my job. So we put a drop out there. Uh. But. Any member of that fire department that wants to retain their member of rescue in rescue, I would never say no. And anybody that wants to join rescue on that fire department, you know, our doors are open, our application process is open, so. But I do agree that. A little tough, tough nut. When that fire district has been putting the bill on behalf of the county for all these years. And probably should have been helping them financially through all of this, so.
Well, then also.
I get that. I feel for them on that.
Hydraulic hydraulic rescue tools are a thing of, are, yeah, I mean, they, would you guys pay for them? And what are they worth now? Like, that that's that's hard pill to swallow though. Um, because now, yeah, everything is battery operated. I mean. And so, you know, we can. We can buy a new set of hydraulic tools for eight thousand dollars now. How many years ago did it cost forty grand for the same set? And so like, you know, that proposal was also made in the beginning was. Can we, can we help the taxpayers by giving some of that money back to Effingham to recoup that huge loss, right? Um. We just don't have that money. So I mean, like, we want to, it's unfair. It just sucks.
I don't know that. So I know that we want to recoup the money. We just want to continue to do what we've been doing. And and protecting the people that we've served for the last. Twelve years. I mean, I think that's all we're after.
That and and another thing with, you know, if we. Districts and fire district two gets rid of rescue and then not having that, I mean, that lowers our call volume also, which is. And grants are based on your call volume. You know, things like that, you know. We only run. Twenty fire calls a year. And chance of ever getting a grant. And what do we run? How many? Rescue calls probably a year hundred and.
A hundred and twenty-five or thirty calls last year. I'd say probably eighty-five percent of those were EMS or. Medical emergencies or reps.
Can you help me understand that? Um. Because I thought that Effingham Fire. Was a separate entity from Atchison County Rescue. And when you're saying we run rescue calls, so if I want to join Effingham Fire. And I go, I come to you and say, hey, how do I join your fire department? And you tell me your protocol. Once I join, I'm now rescue two?
You can go through.
I'm just trying to understand because to me, they're two different entities, right? Like the protocol for fire, I can come respond as a volunteer fire. Protocol for Atchison County Rescue, they're two different entities, so you have to be cross-trained or have the training in both, which we're blessed that many of you guys that are. Fire district two are rescue trained, but. I guess I'm having a hard time understanding why you would not still respond to rescue. By having a county-owned truck and tools. I'm just trying to understand, for for the people.
The way I understand it, and I could be completely wrong, is that with that truck out there, if it's not within our fire district, we don't. Our our D two fire district, we don't have a leg to stand on and go outside of it unless they ask. Which in turn is what Johnny's saying is going to lower our call volume. So then grants and stuff.
So help me understand that, because when you page rescue, doesn't anyone on their roster that's a volunteer? Go, if you can, I mean, if you're not working.
Yes, they could still. Run as a rescue, yes, they would still do that if they wanted to do that. What they're saying is this takes the fire volume down. So if we're not paged to a rescue call now, our volume's going to drop down to the just fire calls.
I I think I know what you're asking, Casey. So we have people on our fire district, on our fire roster that have zero medical training whatsoever. So if you call nine one one and say I'm sick. They are not going to go to that. But if you call nine one one and say I've been in a wreck, they are absolutely going to go to that.
As a rescue, but not as a fire.
It's fire. They're not on rescue.
County employee on the rescue squad go through the process, the application process. There are definitely people that are not on rescue on the fire department and they're definitely people on their school that are also not. There is a. Or me, but be on rescue, be under. Our protocol, under our medical direction, be under our rescue protocols. Yes, they will apply through the county H R department. They have to go through the physical drug screen, just all the same stuff now. There is enough members that are. Predate a lot of that, but they're obviously grandfathered in through through that, but yeah. If you want to run rescue calls on behalf of the county, you have to go through the same H R process that any other county employee would.
I think that circles back to the. Where we get the mutual aid agreement to where.
You can rest respond in your vehicles, the fire vehicles is what you're, got it.
To assist. As 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 fire. So you got an assist rescue. Yes. Our fire guys, where the mutual aid agreement would assist rescue. I need it, right, right?
And that's, that's easy. I mean, we have those saving or mutual aid agreements with other agencies already. But.
You know, one, one scenario that comes to my mind, if if there's not a. Rescue. Employee. But there is a fire. Volunteer, if there's a wreck. Two miles north of Effingham or whether it be up at Horton or something, they're right there at the building. Right now, the way or the way we've been doing it is that firefighter that's not on rescue can take that rescue truck. And go to the scene. And be setting things up and be ready to start extrication and run the tools, which always been now at this point.
The the rescue extrication side of it, what do you guys do is your business, the medical side of it. I cannot extend. Our our doctor's medical license to people that aren't.
Right.
County employees, I can't extend our our medical protocol to people that aren't county employees. In terms of providing any type of rescue services on medical, you guys do whatever you want. You're an independent fire district.
But everybody that would respond. Like Seth, Drew, me. Dawson. Gage. We're all on the county. Right, I mean. We're on the county roster, so we so there's an issue with us taking our truck at that point.
Your truck. I mean, I I really can't say.
Will you get reimbursed?
But if you're responding as an Effingham fire fire and not responding as a county rescue, it brings us back to the original issue. Well, shouldn't you be under the fire department's protocol? Yeah, you can respond in conjunction with us. No, no issue, no. No problem for me, but the other side of that is, is right now that rescue truck's on a call. And that's not a firefighter that took it. So. We we come back into the same thing again. We have people that don't want to be firefighters, but want to be on rescue.
But if you take. The Effingham fire truck as a firefighter, they go on a rescue call, you cannot provide medical training because you're not under our protocol.
Right.
So when you, when you roll out, so like if. Just say you drew, if you take. If you take the the Effingham fire truck, say if I'm riding.
At the moment, that's kind of where I had to draw a line.
If you take the Effingham fire truck. The rescue call, you cannot provide medical training. Or medical.
Unless Effingham Fire were to get a medical director in protocol, but that's state regulation. That's not my rules. State border EMS has very clear rules on how paramedics, E M Ps, E M Rs, A M Ps can function, and it has to be under, it's a very limited circumstances. Under the medical direction of a doctor and under protocol.
Some of the ones that are are certified, but you're. You're on, if you take our truck, you're you're responding as fire, you got to take that out of picture.
But if you go P O V on your nine hundred number and or take that truck, I think that's just rescue, that's.
So it's, so what if, what if we, the fire department. Got our own medical director and made our own protocols. And then we could run in conjunction with you and provide medical care, right?
But yeah, that'd be entirely your decision.
It'd still be a, it'd be a mutual aid agreement, so, but it would be.
And it's two separate entities.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But yeah, no.
But like if.
All across the state.
If we decided, you know, if someday we decide to not use backboards and you guys are still using backboards, the patient, you know. Gets an ulcer that leads to a leg falling off or something like that, then that's where it's like, we got to be able to draw a line. There has to be, like, there has to be protocols to follow back. Fortunately, that's the world we live in today where everything is legal.
EMS and.
Even though we all have.
I wish there was a way to modify our building where. Only one. You know, have a separate door, but there's just no way to do it. With the equipment we have. Cause going out the east side of the door or east side of the building, the big trucks, they drag. And it had to be that way because of the street and the lay of the land.
The option for your county to buy your. Truck and put it in the weed in the noxious weed building. And then give you guys access, you know, your the county folks access to you guys that are all qualified. Is that? Not that doesn't fix the. The personnel issue? Because you you guys, pardon me.
They don't have the money to buy the truck.
Yeah. It's their truck. They can name whatever number they want. But I I don't think we're going to come. I'm building middle ground on that just because. You. We're we're limited on funds as a county. I'm limited on funds on what we have and we do for emergency services and. When we were given that truck. Free charge, so. Again, what's not fair to the fire district who has provided this out of their or out of their own budget.
Yeah, yeah.
Also, how do I? Justify spending taxpayer dollars on a truck when we were given a truck free charge, so.
Yes.
That's really, really difficult for taxpayers and guys and say, well. We bought this truck, but we also have a free one. That puts.
Well, but you still with that option, you're still stuck with two trucks in the same. You know, four city blocks from one another. I mean. I don't, but to me, it just seems. Like we should be able to get past that point. But. I'm a new guy on block.
Ask a question. Is the equipment on the truck that we're not wanting? To limit access to, is it different? Equipment than is on? The truck that the county has?
Yeah, and some of the equipment on their truck is also county-owned. So that also brings up, should county employees have access to the rescue struts, the A E D, the medical gear? About some of various other tools and Stokes basket, those are all county-owned. So again, the the. A mishmash of fire districts and county-owned equipment.
With, well, what did you say, ninety percent of fire department, ten percent county owned equipment? You know, so that's probably fair.
In terms of dollars, probably, um, well, I I don't know, but A E D and the rescue straps are pretty expensive, but.
I think the county owns the rescue struts, the A D, the med gear, like we're said, the Stokes basket, I think there's a battery operated chainsaw. I think there's a. Battery operated drill. I think there's a battery operated light tower.
Roads.
Yeah, so I mean, there there's a handful of equipment, but not a lot, but it's it's the counties.
And that's still on the truck at the fire. So the one that's in the noxious weed building, is that fully, it's fully equipped? Oh.
It is fully equipped.
I I knew that there was some equipment taken from. Their truck? Or or not? Okay, well, that's what I knew. There was a suggestion or I think that was in the agreement. I was just wondering if that had taken place.
You know, when we separated and put a truck out there eventually. Um. When we get tools back, if we're going to have another backup truck like we've had in the past.
That's my question. Well, as a newbie, um, so if the equipment's all the same, and I'm assuming you all are, everybody's trained to use all the equipment. Why is there concern with access to it?
Not not so much access to that truck. It's sitting in the building with access to. Everything the fire department owns, two bumper trucks, two tankers, four grass trucks.
The office.
The office, the tools, the. I mean.
The gear.
The gear.
The miscellaneous equipment that.
I mean. I personally haven't been in. And the other fire stations in the county, but. Ours, we have a complete set of tools in there that we can work on anything anytime we want to.
There's one that interests.
Yeah, yeah, yes, ma'am.
Which I respect that. I think you should have. Know who's in your building at all times and and, you know, I respect you guys' stance on that.
I don't know what the dollar amount is on our tools, but we have a full set of standard, full set of metric. I mean.
Yeah.
We come back to the station that. After a fire call, whether it be ten, eleven o'clock at night or something broke down and we fix it.
And you know where everything is when.
And you know where everything is when you need it. So, yep, that makes sense.
You know, like I said earlier, if there was a way to modify our building where. Just rescue, you know, the EMS rescue personnel that's not a member of the fire department. That's all they have access to is that little corner, but. To do that.
Yeah, if that's what came up when we were building, it would have been easy to do. I think the mutual aid agreement sounds like the way to go and, and. You know, we need, I guess, we. That are certified. We want, we want medical care. We need to get our own medical director and protocols. So we need our own medical director and. Why we couldn't, you know, get our own protocols.
Well, your numbers, your response numbers up.
But that would bring up the next question, and then I think this is a question for Cory, maybe, maybe it's for Jack, but. Would. Could we still be paid for everything that we currently cover as rescue? If our fire ward allowed it to run out of its fire district, would you guys be willing to do that, I guess, is what I'm asking?
Oh, that, that'd be between you and dispatch. I wouldn't obviously stand in the way of anything, but that's really not mine. My wheelhouse, that's Jack and him.
Because that, that's the only way you're going to keep your numbers. I mean, you'll keep some of your numbers if we just run our fire district, but. In order to keep all of our numbers for report reasons, you're going to have to run what you run now, or you're not going to hit those. Which we hope we don't hit them, but.
So would you respond to? The same. Area as rescue two district? Would that include everything outside of your fire district that was west of, was it Askew that you mentioned or? Cayman, sorry. So.
I think that's what I was just trying to ask Cory, and he said there would be more of a.
I thought on it outside of, outside of your jurisdiction or the lines of.
Okay, well, I, I, cause I think you mentioned fire district. And I didn't know whether that left open everything outside of your fire district or talking about the western portion. Rescue two.
If there was any way we could work it with a mutual aid or an automatic aid agreement, you. Hopefully cover what you cover now. But if that be the whole western.
That would be some maybe in a mutual aid agreement if rescue page. Went out. I mean. In that mutual aid agreement that. You know, the fire department would respond to anything that was in the rescue two. I don't know whether that would work in a mutual aid agreement or. I mean, because, I mean, right now, the ones that are doing rescue. We run our radios on scan. We get the messages on our phone. If they're on fire, most of the time they're just running on fire and. Don't even know there's a call.
Help me understand that call volume because I'm still stuck like the fire. Your fire department and Ashington County Rescue, two separate entities. So when you run as a fire. Department rescue calls, you can utilize county rescue calls for your. Incentives to write grants? So is that what you're saying? Okay.
It increases our call volume.
Even though you're not responding as.
We're fire, we're both.
Inter- interesting. No, I, yeah, no, I, I'm learning some because I didn't, I didn't know that. I was still thinking of them separately like.
So, so you, you can write up a mutual aid agreement. But ultimately, the county is responsible for. Anything you can't get to. So in other words, if there's not anybody, if there's not somebody available. For a call, uh, who knows where, clear up by the county line, north of you guys. And they may have to respond, the, 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 the issue with the truck. Is that they've got to have their truck. The, the one that he is now.
Right.
So, so we can't get around. The, the equipment.
I think you're going to have to have two out there.
Yeah.
You're kind of going to have to have one, then we will have our, I, I mean, I don't know if there's a way around it personally.
Okay. Yeah, because the, it seems like the mutual aid agreement is pretty, that's pretty cut and dry. It's just a matter of the equipment. And so apparently. This is, I guess this is working, having the two vehicles and. And.
There's been more than one, so we've used both, more than one set of jaws at a time. It's like I said the other night, I was talking to the other night, and they said, you know, offered eight thousand dollars. That eight thousand dollars don't mean nothing to me at my level of setting in the car and I need extricated and we need two sets. That money. I don't need that money.
But you, but you didn't have the two sets until he moved one out there.
Well.
I mean, not, not in the vicinity.
But. We would still call for them if we thought we needed them.
Out of Ashington or wherever they are, but now.
And a lot of times, if it's sound bad when it gets paged, we'll have them come anyway. And if we don't need them, we'll, we'll cancel them.
And there's been several times that it sounds bad, the truck's rolling from Effingham to Ashington where they already have two down here, but. I mean.
You have people already there.
So, so basically what you're saying is it's not a bad idea to have. Have the two vehicles and. County personnel available. On top of.
Eight thousand dollars, you know, that, that money means nothing if you save somebody's life. Have an extra set of tools out there. But I think the unfortunate part about the east side of the county is now. People always had two sets and now you have one.
We have another set on the way. There is another, and that's where the eight thousand dollar number come in. And I know I completely understand fire district's point. It just puts. I can buy a separate thousand. It's, it's a terrible thing. It's a hundred percent right. It's. It's not about money, but yeah, it ends up being, we have to, you know. Spend this money responsibly. So, but yeah, there is a slightly newer set coming. Uh, that's completely compatible with their set of tools and our two sets of tools. And we will be putting together another rescue truck to replace the one that moved to Effingham over here, so. Those are due by the first of next week. And they'll be the ones that you signed off on. Will be refurbished, uh, newer set of spreaders. And new fluids, new hoses, new seals, and a two-year warranty, I believe. I've been talking to a school there a little bit, so I can't remember. Exactly what he told me, but.
What would be the cost of a new set of jet, uh? Jacks and where we have. For a use.
Yeah, that's, that's right. The ballpark new set, you're looking at probably twenty-one, twenty-two, somewhere in there.
If you go aluminum like what we have, if you go still, you can get them a little cheaper. Yes, my thought is let's just try and look on mutual aid agreement. Or auto aid agreement, whatever you want to call it, or both.
I think that's a great plan. I think mutual aid agreement is the way to go and. Everybody. Still putting your expertise to work together and. Saving lives, I mean. You guys are doing.
And in the western part, if you got a truck out there, we got a truck have a bad wreck, we've got two sets, I mean. Any one of us can grab our truck or, and you know, if there's two of us in town, grab two trucks and go to a wreck.
Guys have known me long enough, but I don't care how many emergency vehicles go, we can always call them.
And sitting in a seat, even though I wasn't here when all that happened, I can't imagine. I'm sorry, like, that's. That is tough to swallow. Absolutely tough to swallow, so. But thank you for sharing that.
Thank goodness the board. Stepped up and said, yeah, we will do it.
Yeah.
It took some finagle to do it, but we got it done.
It's awesome you guys stepped up, because.
And, and at the same time, this all happened, we was in the process of. Building that new station. So it was kind of like, oh. Well, this is more of it, fine.
Yep. Well, I want to thank everybody for their service on across the board, countywide. It takes somebody special to do it. I myself, when I was participating, I didn't like the firefighting part of it. I mean, that wasn't my forte, but I respect it. I mean, it's. It's, it's a calling.
It, it takes a lot to get out of bed at three o'clock in the morning, you know.
Even when it's not about a fire.
You know, just, you know. Everybody sitting here started when we was young, you know. Let's, let's go. And now we're getting some aid on us and. Yeah, it's, it, it'd be there. We're, we're on our way, but.
Well, thanks for reaching out and thanks for asking. Appreciate your board members reaching out and asking to have this meeting because I think, I think it was good, like, just to understand. A whole thing and to know moving forward with the mutual aid and two sets in the western count, part of the county, like. Think it's going to be, it's going to be good. So.
Thank you guys for having us.
Thank you for having us.
Yeah, you bet.
Yeah, that's well, there's going to be that mutual aid. Are you guys going to try to do that?
Yeah, we can pick.
There's, we have boilerplate too.
I'm all in favor of stealing.
I think you wrote the, why the guy sold.
Does anyone have anything else, um, to say before I call for a motion to adjourn? Are we good?
I think we're good.
All right, awesome. I'll look for a motion to adjourn at eight twenty-five.
So.
Moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye. Aye, passes, read as you.
Thank you all.